We'll go ahead and get started, it's three o'clock. Thank you, everyone, for being here. And I want to especially recognize Representative Peterson for being here, thank you. I'm sure there's other dignitaries will maybe, should we introduce everybody that's here? Okay, we are all the county council, we don't need to introduce us, do we?
We have name tag.
We have name tag, you know who we are.
We don't need to know anything about us.
Okay, let's go ahead and have our planning commission introduce themselves and then we'll let everyone in the audience introduce themselves so that we know who's here. So we'll...
...newly appointed member of the planning consulting.
Kurt Bacon.
Nathan Downs.
Beljour.
Chris Sands.
Chris Sands, thank you. Okay, Andrew, you can introduce yourself.
I'm Andrew Erickson, I'm the Paul Samuel for the county council.
Okay, we'll just go down the row.
Grant Colford, Bear River Health Department.
Okay.
Richard Worley, Bear River Health Department.
J.C. Weyman, deputy chief of Cache Valley District.
Okay, Angie, why don't you...
Angie Zetterquist, interim director of development services.
Scott Buck, regional engineer for water rights.
Okay. Corbin, you can tell us who you are.
Mark Allen with the Herald Journal.
Yeah, be careful what you say.
Mike Peterson.
Eric Humphrey, I'm with the Utah Water Science Center, USGS.
Aaron Child, just local resident.
Okay.
Sam Anderson, student at the university.
Great, thank you, everybody. This is Andrew Crane, our attorney, one of our attorneys at the county, he's here to help us. So I'm gonna, and we have Connor, who, from our planning department. Okay, Nolan, I'll just turn the time over to you to run this meeting, because I am not in charge.
So, just a little bit of background, I spend a lot of time on planning and zoning, love these guys and have a lot of respect to all the time they put in. Some of these guys, like Chris Sands, has been there, how long, Chris?
Eighteen years.
Yeah, so...
I sure wish you'd get it right.
It's still working.
It's that pay that keeps you coming back, right?
Fifteen dollars.
Come on. So, I live out in Mount Sterling, and recently, and when I sat on the planning and zoning, Chris, I was asking Angie this, wasn't the largest subdivision we ever did, like nine or 11 homes?
Yeah, somewhere around there.
Now, we've got three in front of us that are 20-lot subdivisions. I have two neighbors right now that their wells have kind of disappeared, they're actually drilling two new wells, and I'm getting concerned about water, and I've expressed this to Skylar, so Skylar, thanks for being here. I just wanted to get an assembly of people, because the planning commission sat and listened to a subdivision here a little while ago, and we have no tools to say no to a planning, to a subdivision if they have water rights and everything else. And I'm just wondering, is that the right way to go about what's going on in the unincorporated areas of the county? Because as a county, we really don't provide any municipal services, and when we pack that many houses in a place, it affects fire, it affects our roads, it affects engineering, it affects a lot of things. And I think it's going to be an effect on our water system. And I'm happy that USGS is here and that Skylar Buck. And so, Skylar, I'd like to start with you, if you guys, when you want to say something, come up to this mic, because we actually had a meeting like this, what, three years ago, when we had Will Atkins in here, your private, your previous guy?
Mm-hmm.
And he talked like in Box Elder, there is a plan where if you're doing a certain amount of a subdivision, you have to drill a well first and find out if there's water there, is that right? I want to just get some ideas of what we do going forward on this, because growth is not going to stop, and let's have an understanding of how we do this.
So I think Box Elder did want to incorporate something like that, they kind of went a different direction. So they have lots of water suppliers throughout all of Box Elder County, like here, I think there's only like Newton, but over there, there's a whole bunch. And so what they've done is, they said, if there's any subdivision in the county, they will allow them to hook up one well, so they could get one well to drill, but if they're within, I want to say it's 1,200 feet of an existing water supplier, then for the rest of the development, they have to hook up to that. And I know that, yes, they do want to have wet water and know that water's there before they'll allow any real development, as far as I understand it, in Box Elder County.
Any other thoughts you'd like to have us sit on before we proceed, or what, on the water?
I don't, I know, like, this isn't quite my lane, but I know in Box Elder County, they're also concerned, like, the health department, they have some rules, but I think Box Elder County is also exploring how septic tanks could impact water. I know that, for them, that's a big concern, that they're trying to look at other information, try to find out, like, what density that could become problematic for them. Anyway, I don't know that I have anything, if you have more questions, feel free to...
Have some.
Okay.
Nate?
I have one for you, Skyler. So, in Nolan's area, Wellsville City just drilled a pretty big new well. And what's the difference, I guess, I see that well as a lot bigger draw on the aquifer than even a 20-lot subdivision at home, right? The one we approved maybe three months ago, 25 lots or something there, right? They're gonna, they've got a big well that they already pump out, irrigate that ground, they'll pump less, because they're irrigating less acres. So in my mind, the water supply in that, on that field, is going to stay similar. But now we're putting 25 homes on essentially 24 acres, and we're gonna have 24, 25 septic systems and 25 personal wells. So the contamination issue, to me, seems bigger than the water supply in a situation like that. And it'll be a little bit better with the health department, but what do you see? I see the big wells that the cities are putting in as, you know, if you look at the few homes that are in the county compared to the size of wells and the pumping capacity of the city wells, and that's where 95 or 98 percent of the water is being taken out of the aquifer. But as a water quality standpoint, we're punching a lot of holes in the ground that now have straws that can go the other direction with contamination.
Didn't hear the question, but yes, yes, I agree with you the more...
Are you more concerned with water supply? So Box Elder County does have a little bit more of a groundwater supply issue.
Yeah.
Our new study is gonna show us more here, but it's, we're a year plus out of that being completed?
Yeah, I mean, Cache Valley varies quite a bit. If you're on the, if you're on the east side, I mean, the aquifers are really good, I don't see it as a problem. The west side, the Wellsville does quite well, but there are spots in there where the transmissivity of the soil's not as good, and so, but even then, they're okay for homes, and they're unlikely to impair other people because the transmissivity's so low that their radius of influence doesn't extend out very far. And you're right, that the larger wells would be more likely to impair and cause problems than smaller ones.
What does that word mean?
Transmissivity.
Transmissivity, it's how well water can flow through the soil. So some soils allow water to travel through easily, like gravel, and then you get a clay, and it's almost impermeable, but not completely.
Thanks.
Eric, why don't you come tell us where you're at on your, he's from the USGS, let's, if he's got any insight from that, if you don't mind.
If you have it.
I know.
This mic right here?
Yes.
Okay, thank you all for letting me come today, it's an honor to speak before you. I think one of the main things, if you're aware of our study, that you may not know already, is that we are looking at this large regional aquifer in Cache Valley. That's the main focus, is to understand what, how much water is in the main principal aquifer, but also, where does that water come from, and how long does it take to move through the system from where we think it's entering, in places of recharge, like the mountains, to where it's exiting, either in rivers, springs, or being pumped out of wells? Now, while that's the primary focus, we're also looking at other additional aspects of the Cache Valley water, including shallower aquifers, these unconfined units that might be more susceptible to septic tank contamination. Those are sort of additional aspects of the study that are ongoing at the moment. But we hope by the end of this, which is still about a year out from real numbers being produced, we will be able to provide recharge rates, how quickly the aquifer is being replenished with water, in addition to how much water we think is being pulled out from pumping, we're compiling data that we have. But then also, how long could it, would it take to get replenished? So, water that is, that falls as snow in the Bear River Range, does it take five years to get down into the center of the valley? Does it take 100 years? Right now, we have a couple of samples from wells that are thousands of years old. And so these are sort of the questions that we can think of to help Cache Valley water management in the short term, but also in the long term. What does it mean to have a thousand-year-old groundwater being your primary source of water supply? So those, that study is ongoing, we are, we have some preliminary results, I can share some today if we want, but really what I'm...
Interested in, yes.
Yeah, they'd be, I think, interesting to see. But for the most part, what I'd like to do is hear what kinds of concerns you all have, and then as we turn these data into interpretations, how can we make sure those interpretations are useful to people who use the water?
So, one question for you.
Yeah.
Nate, you know Chad Brown and that, and he's involved in forensic engineering, but I look at all of these canals that have been in Cache County as a great source of water, but there's evaporation and subbing of those canals. And I've asked Chad, okay, as we pipe those, we're supposed to save 30 percent of our water from evaporation and subbing, do you know if that's going to affect our groundwater once we stop those canals from flowing open?
There are several ongoing seepage studies of those canals to determine if the canals, as they are, unpiped, open, and presumably, open to the groundwater as well, how much of that water is losing into the subsurface. So it's an open question at the moment of whether or not these canals are actually a significant source of groundwater recharge. In other words, do, does canal water actually provide water that one day goes to wells? That is, we have some initial results, I'd have to circle back with Bethany Nielsen at USU, she leads those studies, but I can provide you whatever information we do have.
Cool.
One follow-up on that one, and then a question. So I think, I think the two main canals that show the most deep water recharge are the two highlight canals.
Yeah.
The Fortune Point Highlight and the Highlight that comes out Logan, they're high enough, but most of the lower canals, Bethany studies can almost track that water from the canal back to the river, or in the Crockett system, from the canal to Logan City sewer system. They're pretty shallow groundwater, so they're pretty easy to track back and forth, but those two upper canals probably have some significant deeper groundwater recharge, but they're, yeah, they're still fine by my data. The question is, so are you looking at, I know that the 91 or 92, the last groundwater study...
Yes.
It showed we had roughly 220,000 acre-feet of annual recharge, and we were taking out 30,000 acre-feet roughly.
Right.
Are you accounting for in this one, all the water that comes out of the bigger natural springs? That would be another huge amount of that 220, right? We know, we know that 220's not all staying in there, because our aquifer's pretty low water.
Right.
We have all the artesian pressure, so 220's going in, somewhere 220's coming out. So are you trying to track where that's coming out?
Yes, we are trying to take into accounting of everything. There's a couple of caveats to the numbers from, I believe that 1994 study is what you're referencing, where the recharge number simply comes from an imbalance of the math. This is how much water, it looks like, is flowing through our streams, how much is coming out of wells, and how much is coming out of springs, and what, where there's an imbalance, then we say, well, maybe that's, some of that's interbasin flow, but the numbers in order to add up must be recharge. And what we're doing is, we're saying, rather than saying that recharge is the mathematical assumption, we're actually trying to measure that and seeing how it compares. So yes, we will take into account major spring discharge, I mean, that's a huge component of the groundwater budget. But I guess, just to be clear, like, what we are doing is taking novel techniques and actually trying to measure recharge as best we can, and see how that compares to the overall groundwater budget, rather than just assuming what the recharge is based on.
And that's the big reason we requested the study with, from state, because they wanted to change groundwater policy.
Ah.
We're like, we need a new study, because the 94 one wasn't all that accurate.
Yeah, correct.
There's new technology out there, so I'm glad you're accounting for all those.
So I have you to thank for this study, it's been great so far.
I think you have a group...
Several folks.
We pushed pretty heavy, before we shut everything off. If we really had, you know, 100,000 acre...
Right.
Plus, why do we shut people off if we don't need to?
Good point. And I guess, one thing I didn't mention early on, is that the groundwater model that's associated with this, so we're taking these, we're, there's two phases, we're collecting samples, we've had a lot of great participation from municipalities and well owners and spring owners across the area, but we're going to, that's phase one, we have a lot of information on that that will help us with recharge, but we're also going to use those results in a groundwater model that can be used to, look at scenarios. What happens if snow changes, greater snow, less snow, earlier melt, later melt, things like that, developments? What happens if you put a few more straws in the ground? So those kinds of things, we're also working on, and I think that'll be really useful to you, but I forgot to mention earlier, the groundwater model is showing some promising results.
Okay, thanks, we'll probably be back at you again.
Thank you.
Bear River Health, would you answer some questions on what you see going on septic tanks in a county, and the closeness of what, like Nate talked, on this 20-lot subdivision?
Richard Worley, Bear River Health. I guess, first of all, do you have some initial questions you want to ask, or you want me to just kind of briefly go over what we do, and...
Is our current method of septic tanks in the county right, or can we upgrade or do something different to watch our contamination of water? If we're, I mean, 20 homes in a 20-acre lot or a 20-acre area, I think you're fine, but if you start talking, what Skylar talked about, the, that big word of water moving through...
Transmissivity.
Yeah.
Transmissivity.
I wrote it down.
You've really got to determine what that is in those areas, so, I just think we need to be looking at that. The more homes and the greater area, the, I just start worrying about that.
So, we're the permitting authority for septic systems for individual homes in the county that are less than 5,000 gallons a day, and our authority comes from Utah Administrative Code, and, which is R317-4. And in that code, it allows us to permit systems at a density of, if they're on private wells, the range is an acre to an acre and three-quarters for, per lot, and it's based on trans, transitivity in soil. So if you have a gravelly soil, you could go with a smaller lot, which would be an acre, or the clay soils, it would be more of an acre and three-quarters. And that's really all that we have to base our permitting authority on, is that, that table, you know, with the lot size. If, if contamination is an issue, or if it becomes an issue, then you have to start looking at, you need some data to support that, you know, with a density study, to see how those are impacting the groundwater. And we've seen that a little bit, Millville has had some issues with nitrates in their groundwater, because they're very...
And I'm hearing that in some areas, like in Mount Sterling as well, so...
I'm not, I don't know, Grant, are you familiar with...
My daughter had to put a whole new filter system in her well, because the nitrates were so high, so, that was just this summer.
And if it's a private well, we're probably not privy to that information, so that's interesting, but, but yeah, Millville had some significant problems with nitrates, and as you know, they're, they are going on sewer, so that will help resolve that, but, you know, Millville's a very densely populated area, a lot of septic systems, whereas out in the county, it's not that bad, but, you know, it could be, so, yeah, go ahead.
The county allows for as small as a half-acre lot, so is that a conflict with septic systems?
What Millville had.
So, let me, let me back up here, so if, in Millville, they have a public water system, so you can go with a smaller lot, so with, if you have water hookups, then the range is 20,000 square feet up to a half-acre, based on soil type. So, yeah, you can do smaller lots if there is a public water system, but if, if it's on a private well, and the county has a half-acre, we would have, they would have to defer to us as far as lot size, or we wouldn't approve it.
Yeah, because that's, because that's interesting, that's unincorporated, right?
Right.
We, we provide guidance on unincorporated areas, the county allows for as small as a half-acre lot, but if the health department's not permitting, it's more than a half-acre.
Then where are we at on this? Right. Right. Matt Phillips had a question for you.
Matt Phillips, public works director for Cache County, I was just gonna ask, if you're basing that on a one-acre lot on a single bedroom residential, probably based on bedrooms, a lot of house and a shop, and both of those are trying to get on a septic system, so would that increase the lot size, or how would you work with septic permitting when you had a house and, say, an accessory shed or shop or something like that, but also had septic?
Or add to that when people do a rental, or something that's...
Or an ADU.
ADUs, yeah. Currently, we, that's, we continue to do that same lot size, usually an acre is adequate for those types of situations.
So for clarification, you could have two septic systems on a one-acre lot, or if they had a house and a barn, that would be two acres?
You can have two septic systems on a one-acre lot, yeah? Yes.
Brady?
I just have a question, though, because regardless of the acreage, you can have 20 acres or 10-acre average for these 20 lots, but if they're all put along the front edge of the roadway, and they're within 100 feet or so, I mean, the distances, doesn't that play into it differently?
So, it has to be, there has to be the acreage set aside for each lot. So if, let's say, for example, you have a, an area that's clay soil, and they're going to put in their own individual well, they have to have an acre and three-quarters regardless. You, you can't have a smaller lot than that. So if you, if you compact them in front, then are those lots going to be an acre and three-quarters, is that, is that kind of what you're asking, or...
Well, we've had, we've had development in Smithfield and Mandan, lot less, they'll take it, they'll, they'll say we got 100 acres, or it doesn't even matter, but they'll go a half-acre, three-quarters of an acre, but regardless of how much property is affiliated with one house, if they're all around the road, because they don't have to do a longer driveway, I mean, the waters, the wells, the septic, they're, they're right next to each other.
Yeah, you are concentrating them a little bit in that situation. But yeah, they would, in cities, usually they are smaller lots, because they do have water hookups, so...
But this is Canada, what I'm talking about, even in Smithfield, where the developer, that M word acre and three-quarter lots, I'm positive, they, they broke them down to halves, but they still got them.
Because they're doing the clustering.
They're on 800 West, there are a whole bunch of them, by the temple and Forrester Acres, they were, they were half-acre lots, or three-quarters, they were, they were definitely under acre, three-quarter.
They would have to be on city water then, or...
They're not.
They're on the west, the west side.
They're on the west side of 800 West, it's county.
Huh.
The one acre is exactly, or the one lot is exactly one acre. We have a developer that drills one well, and then he'll share that well with two or three homes, before it becomes under the definition of a public water system, he stays right under that, that's what's happening down there.
Well, it's just concerning, because that, that home's that close on septic, I mean, they're right there. Even if they have acreage, if they're clustering like that, it's, it's right, you're right on your neighbor.
Yeah.
Years ago, when they, when I built out there, I got heavy clay soils, I remember Bear River Health Department telling me, you know, it'll take 40 years to move any of that sewage. It was like so many feet in that heavy, heavy clay, and it just, you know, it just took forever in that heavy, so the soils, you know, the sandy soils, the rockier soils, certain areas, I mean, it'll fly through. Smithfield, when they were on the septic systems, years ago, there was always touted the, hey, we flush bents and drinks, and, you know, and that's, that's why there were some issues, you know, but there was more than nitrates, they had other things that were coming up in their water systems, down below, in the springs, and so they, you know, the Smithfield went on their sewer system, that really changed the quality of water down lower. So, so there is relation to all of it, but it's all depends on the soils.
Yeah.
And I guess the, go ahead.
Since they detected the nitrates, how long, I know it probably depends on the transmissivity of the soil, but how long does it take for that contamination to clear up, like in the case of, of Millville? Is that...
Well, it's, it's gonna be interesting, because we are sampling each year to see...
Is that just groundwater, pure groundwater, it's not in the actual water that is being delivered to the homes?
It's the, it's the aquifer that is being delivered to the homes. The nitrates are not high enough to exceed the maximum contaminant level that's safe, so they're still, but they're kind of, they're getting close, but as we continue to sample, we'll see how that clears up, we don't, we don't know yet how long that's going to take.
No, I guess the overarching question that, that I was hoping to get from this meeting, that we can all pull together, is as we plan in the future for development in the unincorporated parts of the county, what, you know, what requirements should we be able to require before development? Like, what are we, what are we looking for, for septic and water, and how do we manage that, so that it's fair? It sounds to me like there's a lot of different things going on around our, around our county, and that was, what I was kind of hoping to pull together is, is all of this expert opinion, so that when things come before us, we, we can say, yes, we feel comfortable in approving that 20-lot subdivision, because we know there's enough water, that the septic tanks will be safe, that kind of stuff. And I think the planning commission is the same way, and I, you guys know way more than me already, and so maybe you have a better handle on that, but that, I think that that's kind of what we're looking for. How do we manage that kind of growth and still make sure and maintain the, the water supply and the safety of the septic tanks?
Yeah.
So...
So what are we trying to protect the people from?
Right, I mean, in my experience, like, I feel like if, if we could require water and septic clearances, like, we know we got wet water, and we've got safe septic system or whatever, I would prefer it to know that upfront and then approve a project, rather than the other way around, like, approve the project and, you know, good luck, see if you get wet water, or see if you pass a PERC test, you know, kind of thing. I don't know if that's helpful or not.
Yeah, I think that's why we're relying on the expertise, because what I'd love to see, and I'm sure you guys would too, is if there was a set of guidelines, like, we drill a test, and we get X amount of water, and the USGS says it's going to be replenished this much, and the nitrate level has to be below this, and it can't have a, it has to flow at this rate per acre, something like that, right? Where you're having like your 10-point tests, if it, if the developer who's interested in the project passes that, then you can, in good faith, just like you would with roads or egress, or adjacent zoning, things like that.
Mike, could I pick on you for a minute, for a legislature-type thing?
You can give it a shot. I'm not late.
Well, for instance, the planning and zoning, we sit here and we see a 20-lot subdivision come in, we can't say no. I'd like to see an ability, because, Angie, you correct me if I'm wrong, but we shall approve a subdivision if they meet, instead of may, is that correct?
Yeah, it is an administrative act, not a legislative.
So...
If you're not changing the zone.
Yes.
If you're trying to change the zoning, then there's a lot more discretion, but if it's, like, these big subdivisions you're talking about, 200 acres, that sort of thing, generate in the 810, 20, 20 buildable lots, that's what we're talking about.
But we're talking about what Brady's talking about up there, where, in Mount Sterling, he's, he's got 300 acres, but he wants to put 20 in a 24-acre place, isn't it? And that takes roads and everything, they're...
It's not big enough, so he won't be able to do it.
That's what I'm wondering, is, we've not looked at that that way, right?
Right, well, yeah.
Or is there different technology we can require in our code? Like, is a septic, is septic system a septic system, or is there different technology we can change the code?
There is different technology, but that's why I wanted Bear River Health here.
That's one question I had for Richard, because that's what we talked about in our one meeting, on these bigger subdivisions, some of the newer technology, you can essentially have an onsite treatment facility for septic.
Yeah, it's like a, it's like a mini sewer treatment plant.
But we can't require that unless there's an identified concern?
Yeah, there needs to be.
For code, we can't say, we're just gonna require that in the county.
Right.
Unless there's a concern.
It's like too, it's too onerous, not of a burden, it's too much of a burden.
They, they require operating permits that are forever for the life of the system, and they're probably triple the cost of a, of a conventional system. And so there has to be reason to, to do that.
Unless they're in a, with high nitrates, we probably wouldn't have a reason.
So Mike, what I'm looking for is, is give us some latitude of saying no, because we can't say no right now, because it says shall. I mean.
Maybe, maybe you and I can talk a little, because I've actually been in this battle for a while. Because it is such a, in a rush to make sure there's enough housing everywhere.
Exactly.
We, we keep doing these things that sometimes are counterproductive.
Well, we have three.
Especially in our county, it's just, it's just killing us.
We have three twenty lot subdivisions that have hit us this year, and they're all in the south end of the valley. And we all sitting there, I mean, I can remember Val J sitting there saying, I don't wanna pass this, but I can't say no, right? So, I mean, and we, and, and yet, I'm, we're property rights, but I'm for doing it right too. So that's why, and Andrew, you might have to help us as far as what we can do from a county as far as ordinance. But we need to start coming together, whether it's water, or county, or septic, or roads. I know Jason's got some thoughts here on fire that we need to listen to as well. So your thoughts, Mike?
But, but I, I'm happy to, to work with, work with you guys for the session, because this is, this has been something really provocative, as it has, as it has you.
Yeah, I mean.
If there's, if you've got some suggestions, some things we can do to tweak this, to make it work easier, that's, that's, we're headed to get it done.
Well, and I mean, we've had to halt things. We put a moratorium for six months, so that's not helping the, the housing goal be achieved either. And that's what happens when you're unsure, is, right? So hopefully that provides some leverage to say, we wanna cooperate, but we wanna figure it out.
Okay, well, we'll talk later, though.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kurt?
All my questions, I don't know how to answer this one, but there's, we're letting these developments come in, like a twenty lots development. But how do you protect existing people around those developments where they, they drilled these wells, and now people are existing there, their well goes dry?
Well, you know exactly, there's a well being dug right across the street right now, because a fifty-year-old well ran dry.
You're protecting their backs.
Exactly. And there's gonna be twenty wells sitting over there. And back to Nate's point, the one big well is there, but.
And just getting a lot less, so it's.
There's less to pump.
But.
Yeah.
The fact that those twenty wells hit the same aquifer, I don't know, because up in my area, I've had neighbors that have drilled five wells. And dry, 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 and then finally hit water.
They're pumping less because they're pumping year round, instead of just over three months?
Yeah, the, the quantity is pretty close. I mean, Skyler could probably speak more to that. But I think, and then when this study's done, that would give us a little better idea. But, but again, from the water district side, right, our bigger concern is, as a whole in the county, you know, do we have an adequate water supply? Now, there's pockets where you hit a dry, right, you hit a dry well, and you gotta drill another one. But I think as a county for code, we're better off saying on the bigger subdivisions, instead of letting them stay at that minimum, right? Four homes on one well, so they don't have to do a public water system. Right? Maybe we look at, if you're over a five lot subdivision, you've gotta put in a public water system. And then it's gotta have fire flow, right? That, that subdivision now meets other codes, that I think we do have the authority already to put in place, right? The small, if you're doing a one or two lot subdivision, we don't wanna make them go to the expense, at least in my opinion, right? To drill a well, make sure there's wet water, right? That might be a hundred, a hundred fifty thousand dollar test. Again, one way or another, they're gonna get water. We've only had a couple lots that I'm aware of in the county that never found water for a well for a lot, right? They've always found it, because again, to the Skyler's point, there's water there for a single home. And you pump so much, so little, that it, to affect your neighbor, most times really isn't happening with those single family ones. The bigger, the bigger one is the Wellsville City well that goes in, that's pumping fifteen hundred gallons a minute, that, that has a bigger draw on the overall offer.
I read.
But if we put in something in place that says, if you're over a five lot subdivision, uh, and then maybe there's some other things, right? If it's five lots over fifty acres, and then off ten acre lots, a public water system might not make sense. But on these concentrated subdivisions, uh, if there's already a well there, especially, right, a public water system, in my mind, makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Now, it has fire flow, has all those things, they'll protect the residents, they protect the other wells, because now that, that water is monitored for how much they're pumping out of it. Where a single well, there's no monitoring, or you don't report how much you use on your personal well in the state. You, you can use whatever you want.
Right.
And now there's a water quality testing, so they're testing that every year. I think there's a lot of things we can put in place without changing state law to give us the power to say no. Uh, we already have the tools in place, let's just update them.
Andrew, do you agree? Can we get something like that?
Absolutely. I mean, the state co-provision, our top notch, it says, if the preliminary subdivision application complies with applicable county ordinances, and the requirements of the section, the line, the line is story shall prove the subdivision, right? The key there is the applicable county ordinances, like I said, for one update, you can put whatever requirements you want in our county ordinances for the subdivisions. That's perfectly fine. And the issue we, the, the question that's been brought up with those bigger lots is, if they comply with all the applicable ordinances that the county has in place, so they shall be approved.
Shall be approved.
Add more tools, add more requirements, based on whatever we wanna do, then that's something we can certainly look at.
No, I think there's wisdom in that. The wisdom I see is that the shift of the risk. Then if a developer comes in and he wants to do, like, for example, a whole bunch of, a whole ten homes in a little area. I think that they ought to be able, they ought to drill that well, make sure those ten homes are protected. You know, you have one public water system, and it's adequate flow, and whatever it may be, uh, versus ten different wells, that you sell them off one at a time. And then they just walk, the developer just walks away and say, hey, you get water, you might get water, you may not, you know? And then everyone just suffers at that point. So I think the shift of that is, is, is good.
So as one of the developers comes using one of these twenty lot subdivisions, uh, just as an observer here, I find it really interesting that the intent of this meeting is to find ways to say no. Rather than finding ways to direct developers to build hous, to accommodate for housing that is in, in such short supply that costs for our children, or your grandchildren, costs are rising on housing because we're saying no. Rather, can we find a way to say yes with certain conditions? That's, we have a housing shortage.
I think what you just said, that's just what he said.
Yeah, in my mind, that's what we're doing. So, so if you're doing a twenty lot subdivision, and, and you've got twenty lots itself, right? Now, instead of drilling twenty wells, that cost each homeowner a hundred thousand dollars, you only have to drill one, a hundred thousand dollar well. So in that twenty lot subdivision, you just saved essentially two million dollars.
Yeah.
Now, you do have to have a long-term maintenance system in place, but in my mind, that's cheaper, right? As a developer, it may not be, because now you're the one putting in the well, for the homeowners, uh, those cost savings should be able to be passed on, sorry? So it's a way to say, yes, you can put in that twenty lot subdivision, we have one well, we know it's safe, clean drinking water for everybody.
Build a system.
And it, and it's a cheaper option.
And admittedly, I can probably raise prices a lot.
Because they don't have to drill a lot, correct? You, so you can, you can probably get some of that money.
But I recognize.
Yes, I think, I, I'm trying to say yes, yeah. I don't think we need to go to legislature and change state law. I think we just need to tweak county code, so we can say yes and say, here's, here's one extra step you have to do as a developer if it's a bigger subdivision.
And that, that would be appreciated.
What I see is the developer makes money, because he's developed a water system, which he charges rates for the rest of their home life there. So now, I want Jason to talk about fire on size of lots, and that's another driver of what we've been looking at on these twenty lots, because planning and zoning is dealing with one in Hiram right now, so.
So I'm gonna start out with kind of a show and tell real fast, just because it, it happened this last week. We passed those out, we passed those out to those guys real fast. So Sunday morning, we had a fire at Fountain Petersboro in the unincorporated county. Uh, at, let's see, what is it, twenty-seven hundred north and sixty-five hundred east? Subdivision out there, and I, it's, is it Red Rim Rock? Which one is it?
Eagle Rock.
Eagle Rock. So this is Eagle, this is Eagle Rock. And then you roughly have, they have.
They're on top of the hill.
They roughly have eighteen homes.
Valley views here.
Fire's going north. So anyway, uh, when I arrived, the fire had, was moving south, uh, hit the road. Luckily, the, we were lucky that it didn't jump the road, because there's another ten houses further down. Then the wind shifted, went up to these three houses that were threatened, so that takes another alarm or two. So we had three, that was, this was a three alarm fire that burned twelve acres, just for the fact that we had structures that were threatened. Uh, it was ten o'clock on a Sunday morning, so we had a lot of people show up. It was good. Unfortunately, if this was Monday morning, it wouldn't have been so good, because I don't think we would've had enough resources on scene to, to stop this. Um, luckily, it started going north away from the houses. Um, we were able to get it stopped right before us, uh, Saff Flower Field, luckily. And then on the other side, if you can see on your map, on the other side of the, the hill, which way, which the fire was headed that way, we still had houses up on top. Now, the neighbor that lives right there at the very top, as I was talking to her after the fire, she says, can I ask you a question? I says, sure. She says, how come I don't have a fire hydrant up here? I says, that's an excellent question. Call Nolan. So this is something that, you know, I've had to deal with for, I've been working for the county for fifteen years, and we do have a number of subdivisions that concern us. And that's one of them. The new one that's going in, it's a concern. Maple Rises is a concern. Charterville is just concerned. Cobblestone's a concern, just for the fact that luckily Cobblestone has a few hydrants, but the rest of the, the subdivisions that are, that are out there, we have no water supply whatsoever. And so, you know, we, we really depend on these, these volunteer fire departments to bring water to us. Because if they don't bring water, we're not putting fires out. There's just no way.
Well, Maple Rises is nothing but trees too.
Exactly. And, and that's why, that's why I'm pushing the second access so much in these, in, in, in these areas where one way in, we gotta have two ways out of those. Plain and simple. If we can't have water, we've gotta have a way out. If we can't have water, then we gotta have two ways out. Plain and simple. One thing that scares me to death, and we have been lucky, this county has been so lucky, um, that we haven't had any deaths because of people getting trapped in these areas. So I think Nathan has an excellent idea as far as the subdivisions. If we could get, you know, a water supply more than five, that would be, that would be awesome. That way, we have the ability to, you know, get water quick. Instead of the closest hydrant to this fire, uh, was Mendon, going back to Mendon City. So if you're familiar with that, it is, and going back to Mendon, that'd be probably, by the time you got back there, or Newton, by the time you got back to the city limits and filled up your truck and got back, it's gonna be probably, gosh, forty-five minutes. That fire moves a lot faster. We'll move a lot of, a long ways in forty-five minutes, so.
What are you considering adding to supply? So if they have a well for five homes, and that well produces eighty gallons a minute, are you having, wanting a system put in?
Yeah, you'd have to have a tank. I mean, the code, if we, if we go by the code, which these guys hire me to follow the code, single-family dwellings will need at least a thousand gallons a minute for an hour. So that's kinda what we're gonna have to shoot for. Unless we wanna make an ordinance and change it throughout the, through, you know, through the county. I mean, that's why they do subdivisions in city limits. They get it, they can get away with it, because there's fire hydrants. We, we, we start putting houses together like this, and a house starts on fire, it takes a lot of resources. If it, for some reason, and Amber jumps to the next house and starts the next house on fire, now what do we do? Who do we call? Franklin County? Boxheller County?
Take them a while to get there anyhow.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's just, I mean, we're, we're just rolling the dice, is what we're doing.
How far out's an airplane an hour? If you, if you have to call for a plane, how far out is it?
Um, I'm not sure they would send one for a house fire. It's a state thing. That's, that's a whole state thing. I have, I, I could not, I can call airplanes on wildland fires, and yes, I can, I could call one, but say it's, it's in the middle of winter.
But like Wellsville out there, when they had that hit fire here, it's been in the last five years, Mount the Canyon, it come right down to all them homes. I think there was planes on that.
Yeah, there was, yes. We can, and we can get aircraft, and thank goodness that we have access to aircraft, but that's not a.
Such two hours or?
Um, it's probably an hour before they can, yeah, Boise, or if there's, they're available in, um, Air, Hill Air Force Base, they'll come. But there's helicopters that, you know, staged during the summer here in Utah, but this time of year, they start going back to, they go to California and, or Australia, and different places to work. We just don't wanna have one set here just for, you know.
What if?
What if?
What do other municipalities throughout the country, because we can't be unique?
Yeah.
In distance, thanks.
Sure. Well, I know Boxheller County has hydrants out in the county. I know that Weaver County has hydrants out in the county. Um, so, and those, you know, as far as.
I, I think the difference in those locations is they have local water conservancy districts.
May, yeah, it may, maybe.
Water suppliers to unincorporated areas.
Yeah.
We don't have.
Yeah.
Lawrence?
I was just gonna say, everybody wants a view, so they wanna build on a hill.
Sure.
And in this valley, if you build on a hill, there's no water there simply because the water runs downhill, and so it's down in that, that valley. And I don't know how many feet they have to drill down, if you're, you know, in those, in Petersboro or anywhere else, to get that amount of water up. There's gotta be quite a cost there. So if the developer wants to develop there, it's a matter of him knowing his costs before he goes in.
Sure.
Make money, or can't make money.
Sure.
But it, it should be very clear to him or her what they're going to do and what's expected.
Absolutely. I agree.
The people who build the house will have the right to say, okay, we've got a system, we've got a pump, we've got a backup pump, and we can fight a fire that comes here, and you're gonna have, there's, you know, three fire hydrants here, and we can get the, get that water.
Absolutely.
But we're not facing that, just like what you experienced out there on the fire. Where's my fire hydrant? We have people moving here from the city. Yeah, asking for a fire hydrant and that, so. And that's, the planning and zoning commission's dealing with that one in Hiram, which is, we sit here and listen to legal opinions for three hours all night long, and didn't come out any better, so.
Well, if you, you got two system thing, you got water, you got sewer. And water becomes one expense, and sewer becomes another expense, they don't have to be addressed, and where do they meet? Because if you're not going to figure out where they meet and how they meet, then even though you have water, you've still got sewer problem.
Well, then, just like Chris and Jason have said, in Cache County, we do not have water districts that we're doing like Boxheller and the other have, so.
Because there is no water.
Well, in the county, honestly, I'm sitting on the county council, and I don't wanna get into that. I don't wanna get into the municipality side, and I don't think we can, can, because it's just too costly. So we have to sit and say, just like you guys are sitting and saying on the solar farm, is this something we want in the county? Well, in the county, how much or how large is a subdivision that should go before we have to have some requirements? So I'm agreeing with Nate, at least we found something to address some issues. And Skylar, you can address later what you think of that idea of one well for how many houses or whatever. I'd like your thought.
No, I think it's good. I, I, I was just gonna add to that, though. It might also be good to look at how close they are to cities that are expanding. So like, you should have a requirement, but also a distance requirement, because if they're likely to be incorporated into Wellsville at some point, it's nice to have it set up so that they can take over that system without a ton of additional costs later.
And that's a good point, because this twenty lot subdivision we're talking about did approach Wellsville. But many municipalities will not ship water outside of their boundary.
And they won't, but eventually they'll probably grow into it. But if we put in the requirement that they, they install the system with the city's design requirements, then the city can take that system.
Exactly.
If it's not to their design requirements, the city will never, when they annex it. I think we can address that in the.
Well, then most cities will say, okay, for annexing, you, you're bringing your water rights to the city too.
Yes, they, they would take that. I, one question for Jason, you're, so, so if we went with something like that, right? Five lot subdivisions are bigger, and you're saying for a single family home that's essentially sixty thousand gallons? Would you then multiply that over every home in the subdivision? So if there's ten homes, you'd have to have six hundred thousand gallons? Or would you just say, end it up in one home for the subdivision?
Right, for one, yeah, for one home, yes. But, but again, we gotta make sure that, you know, we can, we have to, you know, put those hydrants in and make sure that it's all, yeah, to, yeah, from their house, yeah. Because by code, we've gotta be able to get to their house. To, yeah, from their house, yeah. Cause by code, we've gotta be able to get to their house and around that house with two hoses. That's, that's what the code says.
I think there's a mechanism, the state has a, a public improvement district, to be able to accommodate these larger wells and, and finance them, so, um, so it, it's, it's not making it so difficult to, to develop this larger system and accommodate. Like, I really, there is, there is a mechanism for doing that, and it's public enhancement. And so I think it's very reasonable to explore that and look at the existing mechanisms in place to make a requirement for developers to do that.
I mean, it's just like, you know, building your house in the city, you pay, you know, impact fees.
Yes.
Why couldn't we do the same with this? You know, we do the well, and the developer does the well and charges impact fees to people that come in and build their house.
Andrew, you taking notes on that?
It, it could, and I, I don't wanna volunteer at this point. But it, but in the end, it could be the water district that says these private systems could be operated by the district, right? You don't, you wouldn't need to set up a new district for every subdivision. That's gonna take a little bit of work to get the whole water district board to that point, but potentially that, that could be a service that we provide for these subdivisions.
And that's-
And then it's only one person, it's only one person running all those private water systems at, at that point. Instead of every subdivision having a different one, cause the state is gonna, I mean, they're passing a bill this year, it's gonna, they're, they're trying to force away from that, right? Consolidation of small water systems, um, coming from drinking water department, so.
Key to making the impact fee model work would be the water district organized to take that on.
Yeah, and it would be different for every subdivision, but it's gonna, they're gonna be pretty subdivision specific.
Yep.
If you got one tank spread over 20 homes, or one over five, those impact fees are gonna vary a whole lot. But you can also make the developer pay that upfront cost too, and then, then you take that system over. So there's, there's a lot of options there for that.
Even then though, too, I think there's, there's so many variations, like, I know many areas where their water's real sultry. So, you drill this big old well, and it smells like sewer before you even start using it. I mean, I know there's ways of handling it, but it's not really a one size fits all except for fire protection.
No, it's not.
But it's still peace of mind for supply efficiency.
Okay, Matt? Guess you get to tell us your thoughts of what we're looking at it from the municipal services side. Rhodes and that.
I wish I had some notes, but Matt Phillips, Cache County Public Works Director, my thoughts are going all over the place, so bear with me, but when we talk about these water systems, Nolan, you mentioned that we don't have any water districts in, in Cache County? But, but we have the Benson Culinary Water District, it functions very well. Benson provides a lot of water, and a lot of those residents that are building near Benson, they have hydrants, they have city, you know, basically city water to them, and they're able to find these water rights, and so we do have little pockets of districts. Cove, there's a few more up in Cove. So we do have some of these water districts that are providing some type of a network, a, and in my opinion, it works very well. What, what, when we talk about a five lot subdivision coming in, drilling a well, creating a water system, some of my thoughts go to, right now, it's very difficult for me to try to, you know, manage and to make sure that these people are being compliant. And now you have an HOA or something that has no expertise, they're in charge of maintaining some water system, and before you know it, their pipes are broken, they're in trouble with the state, a, and now you have five homes that, you know, signed up for something that they didn't want a part of. And so, I think, and now you have one five lot here and one five lot here, and now you got all these little teeny watered districts and people trying to be compliant, and pretty soon, you, you just, it doesn't work. I mean, our private roads are hard, right? Someone will create a private road, they sell it, they move on, and now, you know, it's, it's dilapidated, there's, no one's been putting money in to fix it. And so, you know, my thoughts go to that is, you know, not necessarily to put pressure on Nate or someone, but if the county is saying, hey, if you, if you come in and you're gonna build a subdivision, and you need to provide a water source and a water supply, I think we have some people in the valley, whether it be a private district, whether it be Nate, whether it be Benson, someone's gonna come in and start providing that and, and how they operate it, but there's, in my opinion, there's money for people to be, to make in the water and the sewer business. But I heard recently that Lewiston is trying to sell water. They have so much water, they're trying to sell it. And, and so whether my source is accurate or not, but they're trying to sell it to other communities. So, I mean, we're not, without the, having those people on board, I like the discussion of they're gonna be annexed in. What are we, what is the county doing to make sure the infrastructure's there so that when they do develop, we don't have a whole bunch of septic systems, and we don't have a bunch of water systems? The other part, not to be too long-winded, is whenever someone drills a well that's more than their own personal well, there seems to be a source water protection. So, currently in the county right now, when one of these larger communities, Lewiston, Wellsville, whatever, when they come in and drill a well, that puts on a source water protection that encumbrance all the property around them, and now they can't have a septic system. So now, if we're creating these water, all these little water places where we have, you know, they have to be registered with the state, they're probably gonna have to have a source water protection, and now you can't put any septic systems in that area too, so. You're encumbering land that's next to you. One of the things I think the county needs to do is, there probably needs to be more permitting for Lewiston to come in and drill a well in the county, some kind of a public hearing, because that changes all the land use in whatever their source water protection is, and encumbrance the landowners next to them, they can't put a septic system in per the county code currently. So, you have, start having a lot of these, and now you have septics, and you have all these things. You're trying to create a whole bunch of little teeny districts, and I think going forward, if you look at Box Elder that has more of these, you look at Weaver County, you look at around the state in some of these counties that have gone through our growing pains, they are getting their water supplied by a water district that has the expertise, they have the funding, they have the backhoes, they have engineers that help them so that those water systems are staying intact, and those people that are building, they, they're buying into that, they're getting their water provided. And so, it's how we start that, but I think 10 years from now, or 20 years from now, I see that there's gonna be more water districts, and some of these things that we're talking about are gonna be more handled by districts around the valley. But I don't know if anyone's ever talked to Logan, how do we get hooked up to their sewer system and create some sewer district out there? You know? Yeah, right?
Sorry.
Or do we need to create, or Wellsville has a sewer, Richmond has sewer, you know, there's a lot of sewer districts out there. How, you know, how we talk to them? Do we, you know, what would it take for us to start looking at them expanding so that they're? You know, right now, the city seem to be very controlling over their water and their sewer, and they don't wanna expand out of their boundaries. They don't wanna give anyone water, but a lot of them have extra water. You know, a lot of them, their sewer capacity could take some of this county stuff, so.
The cities have tons of water because they require all the developers to come and give them their water.
You know, yeah, if we let someone go build in the county, and then they get annexed in, there's nothing in the development agreement or in the subdivision or the county code that would make them participate, hook up, you know, they get to keep all their water rights? But, so.
You brought up a good point. On, on the source water protection plans, I do think the county needs an updated code to address that, right? Clark's been dealt with that last year, right? The developer doing the work up on the mountain above their, their spring, there's, that's, that's the source for three cities out there. I think the county does need an updated code to address those source water protection plans and restrict. Cause I don't think there really is anything, to my knowledge, on the county side that says, if there's a source water protection plan, there are restrictions in place, right? The state has that on record, but we don't really have any way to enforce that if it's in the county.
No.
I don't know that we have any.
Nice on P and Z, the only time we ran into it was when it was a city well.
Yeah.
Like Millville's source protection, Wellsville's, so.
We just need to look at that, maybe the county code, and see what we have in place, cause I'm not aware of what, what-
Well, but even on those source water protections, I got into a situation where the landowner died, and they had some absentee landowners that were running it. They weren't really aware of it, and I came in just as the farmer to start running the land, and a couple of years in, somebody said, oh, by the way, you know, there's a source protection up there. I went, you know, it scared me to death because I've been-
Spraying and fertilizing.
Yeah.
He talked really hard about it.
But there was nobody, there wasn't anything to indicate that to me on anything that I had, and we had been in there for a couple of years.
That's a good point, cause nobody's protecting it or watching it, so.
Which to me, again, is a bigger issue for our groundwater contamination than a single family well. I think some of these bigger things, there's a lot of stuff we need, like, we're, then there's no way we're gonna get all updated, we're gonna need six months more toward it than we got right now. We're already two months into it.
Mm-hmm.
There's a lot of work to do for the legal department to draft some, and, and some more of these meetings.
Are there other counties that maybe have, are farther along and have some kind of codes that we could mimic, or, you know, start with this as a base, and then let's make a few tweaks to make it work for our county? Like, to me, that would be, rather than starting from scratch, let's look around the state and see how other counties are protecting their water, setting up districts out in the unincorporated areas, and see if there's something that we can start with.
I think Box Elder have to probably have something, but you look at theirs, and a lot of their developments more still level. Challenge we have, and they have some of the, the challenge we have is these hillsides.
Well, and they, they've been at it for 40 years, right? Their district has been around, so they're, they started at the same point we are 40 years ago. And they had all these little communities that were on private wells, and now they're slowly running lines across the county, so they have fire hydrants. And they can hook a new subdivision on, cause they're within a half mile.
Do you know how many districts they have over there, Nate? By chance?
They have one real district, they have some small private water colonies and city run, but every other year, one of those small ones requests to be incorporated into the district. And they're just slowly, because it, it's hard for those small ones to maintain those systems. They just, they just took a new one on and out by Badger somewhere else, pretty recent. So, yeah, they're going slowly becoming one for the whole market. Each city will still have their own system.
And the subdivision out there is required to put in the water. They're required, I mean, yeah, they put all the infrastructure in to meet the district's code requirements, so.
So is the next step to move the subdivision ordinance to a P and Z, or, sorry, an OMP discussion?
Sounds like we need to update a code, so, you know, start somewhere.
What's the trigger? What's gonna be the number that's gonna trigger to have this?
More than five?
More than five? We'll have to have-
Well, I think it could be-
I mean, what are we basing that off of?
I know, I think science would be good.
The reason I came with five is that's what triggers it to go to a, a private water system. You have more than five homes or 25.
Ordinance review?
Really, five homes on one well, more than four.
That's it.
Yeah, more than four, five or more, then, then you're required to be, with the state.
Asking what, what process we want.
But if, but if you're, if you're a five lot subdivision on, you know, a hundred acres and they're, they're all on 20 acres, I think there still needs to be some, where it makes sense. It may be the cluster, I think we still need more discussion on that, cause I don't think in every situation, like you said, there's a lot of differences around the county, and it's gonna take a long time.
Well, we also, we also need to be looking at the county. We got fire that says, what's our state law? More than 20 homes, you need a second egress?
Thirty.
Thirty. So when we throw a 20 lot subdivision, like we're talking about in Hyrum, plus the 20 that's there.
Thirty.
Thirty, yes. We need to come up with some number, cause I'm looking at this from the county saying, we're not providing municipal services, so how big and how far out do we want these big subdivisions that we're asking little fire departments to go handle? I mean, Angie tells me today, we had a 98 acre piece come in who's looking to go to rezone to RU2. Yeah, so, here we go again. I mean, we're not slowing this down, and so we need to have something that is addressing that from a county standpoint that helps these guys on planning and zoning, because right now, we can't say no.
But you could, Nolan could-
Nolan, we got a little history to go on, of not much. We see these right now today, and it may not be quite a big deal. But you went down the road, so you think back to a stanchion.
Yes.
Private road, next thing you know, how many homes they built up there? Fifteen? Next thing you know, they can't do their road. It was never designed to drain or nothing else, so the county has to go in and do it. What happened to our municipality out on the hill out in Petersburg? They got arsenic in their water system, and we could go on from there. We're just not designed to put that kind of developments out in the county.
They called the county in Vegas to take over their roads out there, right?
Petersburg? Oh, they would give them to you tomorrow. Yeah, and, and Nolan, honestly, those should be public roads, because-
We ask public infrastructure to go out there and fight fires.
Yes, and at some point, like your trash service, your school buses, those types of things, you, a small little five lot HOA probably doesn't work too bad, but once you start getting a mile of, you know, public roads, and you got multiple subdivisions trying to use all that, there's no organization, there's no-
See, that's what I'm saying, when we come down to an ordinance.
Yeah.
Our problems don't start till they're built out, and then it's huge.
Yeah. So does it go through OMP, or does it go through planning and zoning first with the review of, hey, you know, here's the things we-
I think we gotta give these guys some guidelines. I mean, what's the county willing to sit, and what can we back up legally, Andrew?
Ultimately, it would need to go through, um, if it's a land use ordinance, I'd still go through and get a recommendation from the planning commission first, and then come on to you guys.
Then on to OMP.
Just talking OMP, sure, but then hopefully that's what that-
Right, yeah, so, it can go either way, but I would, I mean, Dave mentioned it, but I agree, not to go through P and Z first, I would think. That's where, I mean, we've had this discussion to help, help move it that way.
With our development services too, like that.
Can you find a way to maybe, you know, we get a lot of pressure on the rezones, right? Maybe there's more restrictions from an A10 to an RU5 to an RU2 based on that water stuff, right? If you wanna go to an RU2, and you wanna put a whole bunch of lots in some area, maybe that is where you start to say, hey, you need some kind of a public water system with hydrants, and, and so, you're gonna find, you're gonna, you know, give them the density, but you're also gonna put them to be able to provide that. Where in A10, if your maximum lot size is back to this acre, and, and you're still more sparsely dense, you know, your density's not as great. Maybe that is a better place for wells and stuff, but when you start being able to shrink all that into a small spot, maybe that is where, and you let the developers go find what's most economical for them to provide that water, maybe it is a small little water district, maybe they're working with Benson so that that development's closer to Benson or Cove, or they're working that out, and it's not necessarily the county trying to dictate how you go about getting your water, but you know, that might be another way to, cause that's what we're getting, is we're getting these, a lot of density in some of these small areas.
The reality is that approach would address smaller density too, just like the rezone we denied yesterday.
But I'm gonna say-
Based on the fact that there isn't adequate water supply, there's not adequate, adequate roads, the rezone is the phase to address a lot of this.
But I'm gonna say, planning and zoning is loaded right now. We've tasked them with the solar farms, we've tasked them with other ordinances, they meet once a month. These guys are all volunteer.
Well, you guys get lots of money.
To sit here and throw another thing for them to come up on a subdivision, I'm, I think we're asking a lot. I think it's gotta be partnership, is my, is my feeling.
These are the meetings where we accomplish something, cause people see what, what's going on.
So I think the council's gotta sit, and we, as a group, have gotta come up with something on the subdivision, cause we need legal there, because we gotta talk about scope, size, fire, roads, the whole shebang.
Additionally, we need to look at the annexation declaration of the cities and see if it will fit, because they will be taken by those cities eventually.
Right, so, I, I, I understand what Mr. Erickson is saying, but you guys are swamped. I mean, we have rezones, we have everything else, so by the time they sit and deal with what the public is asking them, just to come for a rezone or subdivision, and we ask them, I mean, how long we've been talking about the solar? Quite a while. And-
We're getting there.
We're getting there, but I don't, I think these are things that we all need to start gearing up pretty quick, is what I'm saying. That's why I'm asking for this meeting, is I think we've come a long ways. I, I like the ideas we're getting.
Nolan, I just thought of one other thing that's really fast on safety. Again, we talked today about putting it together, and maybe it's not that big a deal. But these people that move out there and wonder why there's not a fire hydrant, well, I'll bet you, I'll bet you hardly any of them understand that I've gotta clean this system out. I witnessed firsthand on a hilly area, people have lived in their home 18 years, they raised fire- I witnessed firsthand on a hilly area, people had lived in their home eighteen years, they raised five kids, they never pumped their tank one time, water starts coming out of the ground, we must have a spring! We must have a spring showed up here! Sorry, that's, that's your sewage.
Dump a drink in that water.
You're right, and that's why I say, when they ask Jason, where's the, where's the fire hydrant? Because they move out there, and they don't understand what, they just love the open space. And I, I get it, I'm, I'm out in the outer country, but at the same time, I'm also sitting here on the council saying, we just can't provide the services that needs to be there. I mean, we're, we're having to deal with financing a fire district, let alone telling these guys to go out and fight a fire at a twenty or a thirty-lot subdivision, and be ready and have tankers and everything else. So this is, these are all big issues that we got to sit and talk about. So that's why I'm saying, until we get there, I like Nate's idea that we come up with some, and I'm not saying this is the governor to control growth, because we all know growth's out there, and he who owns the property owns the property rights. But at the same time, I had a Realtor give me a notice of some of the recent sales, and there's seven sales in the South County, five lots, six lots, and eight lots, all of them are above five hundred thousand dollars. So somebody's making some very good money out there. And we're, as a county, we got to start looking at impact fees or something and limiting, because we throw all this on and say, okay, Wellsville Fire Department or Mendon Fire Department, take care of that, you know? And, and it's not going to work. Or we say to Matt, get the, get the roads plowed, and yet the roads are subpar. So all of these are issues we got to sit and figure out.
Well, and I think one we haven't raised is, every time we've had these public comments, uh, we've had these families who come in and comment and said, you know, we've been here for a hundred years or a hundred and twenty years, and when they come in, you know, this is the burden that's going to put on our family, and we're passing costs on. Because if you look at this page, um, here on the top of this sheet, um, so this farm that's in the bottom, in the bottom right, it's a lighter color. My family farmed that for about three, two years. Um, I wasn't able to buy it because, um, I didn't have the money the developer had. But over the years, there's a whole part of the country here and drilled the well. There was a homestead here, an original homestead from the valley that was founded, and there's springs that fed the home there on the Partington Farm. And these homes came in, drilled their wells, and it dried up the spring. And I understand the way, um, you know, water rights work, it's a right, but it's not a guarantee that the water will be there. And so these homes dried up that, and since then, developer bought it, and there was no water. Um, they would have to drill a well, and they tore the home down. And, yeah, right there in that.
They're talking about this.
Partington Homestead. And, you know, so if, if we're not looking at the cost for those that are already there, that have been there, those families, um, it, it's a really fucking big burden, and, you know, we don't want to bash on developers enough, because not what my intent was in saying that. But when they come in, they're not taking the true cost, or they're not paying for the true cost of what that's for those people that were there originally. And so we have to take that into account as we, as we think about this, you know, because I'm like everybody else. I want my kids to be able to build somewhere and have that. But if they do it, they've got to pay for the cost of that, and that has to be incorporated in. Because, you know, it's not fair for them to redevelop the roads for thirty houses that they put in, they already built the road into their house a hundred years ago.
I agree, and, and there's another thing you guys are dealing with is planning and zoning pioneering that we're trying to work through as an ordinance and everything else. I mean, we throw a lot on these guys, they have a lot of things to work, and, and throwing this subdivision and water on them, I just wonder that it should be sheltered or shouldered by some others too.
Can we give them a five-dollar raise?
You can't give us everything.
Can't give them a raise.
I wish we could.
We could certainly go OMP. He starts out with pulling in anyone, I mean, it, every, it's a public meeting, everyone can participate, and we'd certainly engage with the planning and zoning members in that conversation, you know, Matt's regular there, et cetera. You know, that, I feel like that is the way to spread the workload, we start it that way, but it's definitely.
And I've told planning.
P and Z to review.
I, I don't think we should have a meeting that goes by that we're not looking at one or two code updates, right? Some of them are pretty minor, hopefully we have two coming next month.
Like the camps?
But, but, yeah, there, there are so many things that need to be updated in our code that have been looked at for decades. We're not, and it's hard, because our meetings get long, and then we get to the end, and that's the last thing, like, we're going home at ten thirty. But, but if we don't, we're just going to get further and further behind. So, I mean, I don't want to commit the whole planning and zoning commission, but we, we, we've got a ton of code that needs updating. We're, we're so far behind on some of this stuff that if we don't spend that time and have, and maybe it's a mid-month meeting, every other month it's not, you know, it's like more like this, if some of that planning is not hashed out, um, give the staff more direction to move it along.
So do we make a list now of where we want to start? I mean, do we talk about that right now?
Well, I think we start with Nate's suggestion first.
Don't market is my suggestion.
Well, it's.
We're the father of good ideas, Nate.
We'll call it Nate's ordinance decision. Yeah, is, is there a step that involves looking at what other counties even in other states are doing?
But, I mean, this fits the usual flow at OMP, guys, so it would fit well.
Staff did that, obviously.
Well, I was in Emery County last night, um, at a farm bureau meeting, and, and, you know, talking about solar, that their county's getting overrun with solar, they were talking about.
Which county?
Yeah, Emery County. And, you know, so the whole state, we're all having the same issues. And, um, I, I think, you know, Mark, Nate, maybe we ought to be talking more and use, and combining the resources.
Sure, but I think, because.
I, I think that's what we're all saying.
Like, I know our terrain is unique, but I don't think we're this unique snowflake that exists that we're the first to ever have to solve this problem, and only us in this room can come up with a solution, like.
Well, upper Grand Valley, isn't that a lot of the issues that push them to where they're at today? Development, property rights.
Turning into a city now, they're turning into a city, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, but that's what's driven it.
Chris, do you have some points?
Well, I do, I just, a thought, and then, yeah, a couple of thoughts. Actually, I, I know that, um, you know, the gentleman earlier, his developer, mentioned, um, you know, we have a housing crisis and that sort of thing, and, and he's absolutely right, and it's a, it's a very important issue statewide. We've got to work hard on this, but I would say that we're not going to solve the housing problem in cash county with ten acre lots.
No.
It's, it's not the county, my, my point is, a lot of develop, you know, because I've been doing this for eighteen years now, right? A lot of developers will come in and, uh, they'll, they'll look at the county unincorporated, and they're like, oh, my gosh, it's very affordable. Like, we'll just buy up this land and subdivide it, it'll be great. But they're not factoring in all these other costs that we're talking about. And as a county, we're not requiring them to pay the full cost of services that we've been talking about. So we're, you know, it's, it's really not cash county's responsibility to solve the housing problem, but, I mean, we're, we're part of the solution, but, you know, there's not enough development in unincorporated county to actually address that problem. But related to that, a frustration of mine that hasn't, we haven't brought up, just maybe except on the edges, is that when we do have these, uh, proposals in unincorporated areas that are adjacent to cities or very close, and we approach those cities and we say, you got a problem with this or whatever, or how about, you know, and, you know, it's in your annexation declaration area, so, you know, you know, do something. They're not saying, you know, we oppose this development because it's within our annexation declaration, we want them to come to the city. And I would really like to see more of that happening, rather than them saying, oh, we don't care. And we're sitting there saying, well, if they don't care, then we'll approve it, and then, you know, twenty years down the line, we all know they're going to be suffering from those decisions. And so I don't, I don't have a solution, but I feel like, um, there's, there's got to be something there when projects come up within those annexation declaration areas. I mean, the cities have said, we want to eventually be this, and so what does that mean? If you, if you don't care that we're approving development within that zone, why you have that annexation declaration area in it? That's the point. So I, I don't know what to do with that item, but it is a frustration.
Also, they should be reasonable, right? That annexation zone should be reasonable instead of.
Some of them are pretty.
Have you seen Wellsville's?
I think I could be in three different cities, but you may know that Wellsville, I would have to choose.
I wanted to ask the state, while they were here, isn't, isn't there a rule that if you're within so far of a community water system or like a city water system that you're required to hook on to it?
No.
No, not a lot of them have done that, but, yeah.
And the cities won't.
And then the cities have actually got, they've actually got, uh, ordinances that's fully against it.
Yeah.
We will not serve anything outside of the city boundaries.
Some have tried, but the Bridgman had kind of a, kind of one, but it didn't stand. They got shot down on both sides of the city.
It's in the city's best interest, though, because if it's going to get annexed into the city anyway, they can get the impact fees, they can dictate what it looks like, and they can provide the service, I, like, I don't know why.
Far more cumbersome if you have to do it after the.
Yeah, I don't know why.
Makes it harder for them when they do rate increases, right? They have to let people not in their city vote, so it does cause some other problems, but it seems like smart.
Who here, who here, once you get your home in the, on a corporate area, you've got your well, septic system, and the city's right up next to you, are you going to go, I want to be annexed? No.
No.
No one ever does. You've then, you've created that barrier, you, you've stopped it, basically you've stopped it, and so, uh, so basically, it's everything behind you, you know, they're going to have to go around about on everything to try to get everybody to, you got the little island in there. Uh, it just, it doesn't happen.
And I think the cities are, are doing this because they're kind of fighting each other, right? It's not, it has nothing to do with the county or really their vision for where they want to be. It's like, we don't want Mendon to come take you to this land, so we're going to say, we'll come up to here.
Well, part, there is part of the county, because in our master plan, we went to the cities, Angie, and asked what their annexation part was, because Dave, you were in on that with us. And so, I mean, we basically said before long, we're like Davis County, I mean, Davis County has, what, five miles of county road, and the rest is all municipality, so that's what.
We're a long ways from that.
We're a long ways, but yet we're trying to enforce that by saying, hey, mark your territory, so to speak, so. Skylar, you were going to say something?
Well, I, I was just going to say something that Fox Elder County has tried to do, or at least their, their conservancy district is, they've partnered with some of the cities on wells, but then they share infrastructure because they share the cost. So it's also a possibility that they can become a water supplier and, and actually tap right into their system, especially if he's willing, because he can get the money and share in the cost and help build the infrastructure, which is what, uh, Fox Elder Conservancy District's starting to look like.
Yeah, but then that's revenue too.
Yeah.
It is revenue, and it's a way that they, they built right into the cities. Then you can keep, you know, with your zoning or however you do it, you can try to keep the growth more around the cities instead of just pushing them all out in the county.
No, I just wanted to say, back to the whole going to OMP or the Planning and Zoning Committee being, writing code, I just remember when I was on Logan City Planning and Zoning Commission, every code we ever considered was written by the city staff, by the planning staff, that's where it began. They brought it to us to tweak and talk about, and I, and I'm just wondering how much of our staff, and I know, Angie, you guys are shorthanded, but to me, that's where the code should originate, is with our development services staff and our planning staff. And, and then, and then it comes through this, this function of OMP and, and, um, the planning commission. And so I don't know, to me, that's, that is more of the, where the flow, like, you guys don't, don't have the legal expertise to be writing code.
Where the resources.
When I was on planning and zoning, that's exactly, we relied on the staff would bring these, this information to us. We had a short pe, piece on the agenda, and that's what we talked about it for that, and then we'd move it on.
It's so far over this, right? If we say, draft an ordinance, we need another meeting to do like this before.
But they're shorthanded, you know?
I know.
That office right there, it, we need some help there. Well, we're still trying to deal with rentals throughout the county. I mean, that's been front us a year and a half, trying to control, get a code on that. We're also been talking about.
Powder Mountain.
Powder Mountain, yeah, I mean.
You had to mention that.
We, we weigh these guys down a ton.
I know.
We've got to figure out how to work together and get something together so that we can proceed and let these guys know what to do when they have a development come before them, and that we've helped them, and them be able to do it, because flipping tough, I mean.
And it eventually comes to us then, too.
But if a moratorium lifts, and we don't have anything new, it just goes back to whatever is on.
Yeah.
They're in the land use authority, and it's done. Angie's got it.
Oh, I was just going to make a couple of points. Um, in anticipation of this meeting, um, on the agenda, we did put a discussion item for the subdivision-related things, so we can get that started at the next planning commission. Um, it hasn't typically been our route to go through OMP, uh, but that would be, uh, something to consider. Um, I did put in the budget for next year some money for, to do a full code update, to get a consultant on board. I'm not sure if that's going to survive the cuts, uh, but there are, are other avenues we could look at as well. Uh, technical planning assistant grants and things to help with, uh, getting a consultant on board to help with major code rewrites. Uh, but we do have about three, um, three or four on this next month's calendar to address, so.
Okay, good.
Is your office fully staffed today?
No.
So there's a question, why?
No.
Why?
Nobody's applying. Nobody wants to come in.
Position's been opened.
Not yet.
You haven't applied.
Yeah, yeah.
So you haven't applied yet.
Is there a room?
Insurance is tough, I know.
It's like what Catherine said, though, when our moratorium ends in four months, if we have not made any changes, then it's going to go right back to what it was, and we don't have any options. We, you know, if we can make some, some substantial change, even if we just a be, just a beginning.
Why not have one of these meetings once a month till we get there? Then we can forward this along. I think we're going to have to, so that we're ready in four months.
What, what else do we want to do for the holidays?
Yeah.
And the budget.
We'll, we'll feed you next time.
And budget season.
Yeah, yeah.
Board of equalization.
Okay. All right, I, what else, Nolan, do we need to discuss? Do we need to hear from people?
Planning and zoning, are you okay if we have another meeting? Are you, I mean, you guys.
You guys.
We're about to meet.
Okay.
We're impeding on you like crazy, but.
Would you rather do it at this time of day, or would you rather do it in the evening, in an evening? What, what's more conducive to your schedules?
Evening probably is better for me.
Okay. Okay, that's good, good input. Okay.
Most of us have jobs up here as well, so.
Let's plan an evening to do that in.
But as we get along, I'd like to rely on Eric and you guys from Bear River, and Skylar, you guys too, and Jason and Matt, because we don't know those type of things, but I think this has brought a lot of things to the forefront. Erica, we'll ask you one question, when's the study done, or how far along are we status update? Does that make sense?
Great question. Right now, we're done sampling, analysis is mostly complete. There's a couple of samples that require six months of investigation, so we're waiting on those. But at the moment, we are creating maps and cross-sections of the subsurface that reflect what we think is logical groundwater flow movement. And I'll, I'll say one preliminary update is that all of our, the wells that we have sampled, while the mean, the average groundwater age looks old, we're seeing indications of shower, of surface water from the valley actually infiltrating down. So even if your well's eight hundred feet deep, we're seeing some indications of shower, uh, or water that's actually coming from the surrounding area.
From its springs.
That, yeah, is that where the nitrates are entering, because like it's.
Oh, and I wanted to mention something else, um, we, there are newer techniques on nitrates that can actually differentiate between fertilizer and septic, that are isotopes of nitrate. Uh, they're relatively inexpensive, and if that's something that interests folks here, we could potentially look at a smaller study of that. Because I heard talk about contamination and not exactly sure where it's coming from, things like that, so there's, there are other solutions.
Well, like was mentioned, people don't know that they're going to septic, or that there's not a, a fire hydrant out there. I don't think people know that they can get their water tested very easy either, as they've been there for a long time. I mean, once you drill a well, you know you got to test it, but if you buy it and take over something, I don't know if people even know where the well switch is. And how often should you test it?
I don't taste bad.
You wait till your kid graduate from high school and say, oh, those are the water?
Bring a glass to Nate, he'll swish it.
Your kids start stepping. Your, your kids start stepping sideways or stuttering or something like that, or what?
What, what brought up that arsenic? Well, it wasn't arsenic, what was it in that Petersboro?
It is arsenic. Arsenic.
Arsenic?
And were they required to be tested every so often on a public system like that?
Yeah, yearly.
Is that one in, in the Petersboro, or is that one back up on the, the way into Beaver Dam?
Well, Beaver, Beaver Dam had the same issue. So, that Beaver Dam hooked on to the district development.
I remember the, that one development that was trying to go in up there, like four or five hundred homes or something. And, oh, yeah, we just take the arsenic out. We go, that's a good sales pitch. You know? Come live up here, we'll take the arsenic out of you. So, always wondered about that.
Hey, Andrew, I have a question for you. Can you give us some guidance on code updates if we follow a suggestion, nobody's name, as far as five homes and some water? And, I mean, we need some guidelines of how far and deep we wanna go with the size of subdivisions. I mean...
And the fire's a big one, too.
I mean, fire. We're saying to the fire, go cover twenty homes, how many miles away from the...
I think that'd be something we'd all work in conjunction with staff, right? We take out, like I said, because I'm happy to know everything, right? I need perspectives from everyone else. I'm happy to have work and get craft language that makes sense. But I mean, we're gonna need some input from all the relevant parties to ignore crap that.
Attorneys don't know everything.
They'll do that.
You don't know everything, yes?
Yeah, come on.
Can we just real quick, though, address that one thing, two accesses?
Yes, 'cause that's gonna come before you guys again.
Well, what's the trigger for that?
Well, I, I don't know, the developers still here, no. I feel terrible from one way that we keep making them think there's, there's hope. But until we got that second road, why do we have to approve that?
If I could just, they all jump in, so, but they've been helping to the county go already to address the problem for future subdivisions. So, now where they've already basically been, they had their application in, that's, you know, separate questions, we're still talking about that one. But for future ones going in, that, I believe is already addressed.
Yeah, we've nipped that.
So, we, we can't even use that right?
Not right now. That's why we put it in. But I just want you guys to, to remember where that is, and if you haven't been up there, I need you to go up there and look, because that picture that you saw up there, if that happens up there...
Well, especially now that the dam is closed.
Right.
Where's your fire coming from?
We have to come all the way around to twenty-four.
So, that should be a reason alone. Until the road is done, we should be able to say no to something like that. Have...
I'm thinking the code to stop it right now.
There, see, that's what, that's what you guys face, is we...
What are you guys talking about? Where?
There's a new subdivision on south of Hiram Dam.
Oh, there's already twenty-seven homes, and they wanna put...
Another twenty-five.
So, there's gonna, they want a total of forty-four homes up there. And so...
But they did say they didn't...
Without putting a second access.
Yeah, we had a meeting. No.
No, not on them?
Nope.
Even though they said it in a public meeting, they rescind it?
So, even though they say they'll put sprinklers in the homes, is it, if there's not enough water to pump them?
Well, that, and, and a sprinkler in a home's not gonna save their house.
No, I want to support breakers.
Yeah.
Turn it from the outside in.
And if the power goes off, we have nothing from a well, 'cause they're on wells. So...
Right.
Are we at the point we can tell these guys no?
They want, well, maybe they were getting past where it's not noticed, where nothing is actually...
Right.
Yeah.
Talk about that specifically. But my understanding is they wanna be on the next agenda for planning commission to get decisions so they can pursue any appeal rights they wanna have. So, I'm happy to have that conversation. I'm fully anticipate that coming up. Angie, I don't know if I'm gonna talk anymore, pretty more about that. I think we're meeting on that tomorrow, but that's what we're gonna have.
Okay, so, uh, my feeling is, for the next meeting, I'd like to go and say, okay, if you go more than so many homes, you have a one-well thing, and we start going there. I would like to see...
The water systems.
Yes.
Five, one, five, or what?
What do you guys feel? Five or more?
But is there any consideration with that, though, based on the area and the water that'll...
Let's, let's throw...
Just the one size fits all.
Can you guide us on that, Nate, being in the water district? Or can the USGS guide us on that?
Jason has some.
Let me ask you, let me throw this at you as well. I got a call the other day from a, a contractor from Salt Lake that's coming up to build a house at the top of twenty-four-hundred West. And I, and he was asking me questions. I says, how, how big is your, this home gonna be? And he says, ten thousand square feet.
Dude, dude, dude.
And s, just so I'm like, oh, wow. Um, okay. And I'm thinking to myself, ten thousand square feet? We're getting the con, you know, commercial-sized buildings. We don't need that. But again, I, you know, I have no say. So, just so, let's, let's think about that, because if people are coming in and buying lots at $300,000, they're gonna put some big houses on them.
Yes, totally.
So, uh, you know, that's just another thing to think about.
It's gonna solve our housing crisis.
All right. Or how many lots is not...
Just Bear River, Bear River Health, have any idea of transitivity on land and water where we start talking about this five or more on...
We do feasibility tests on each home that, that proposes a subject system. So, we look at the soil.
So, on the twenty-lot subdivision, there hasn't been twenty holes stuck, though, right?
No, I'm, I wasn't blown down. There's probably about ten.
So, were ten holes stuck?
Ten, twelve ones. But the soils are saying like nothing. Just like...
USGS, do you have any idea of what transitivity we're looking at in different parts of this county?
I don't have the numbers with me, but I, what I can tell you is that although the model is quite regional in nature, when it's done, we can start to, such as, you give me how much water you want, I tell you what, or you tell me what kind of pump rates your wells can produce. I'll tell you how far away that's gonna reach based on the groundwater system.
Cool. Yeah, that'll be awesome.
You got a house that's taking thirty gallons a minute.
Yeah.
It's gonna be pretty small, but if you got a city that's taking two thousand gallons a minute...
Yeah.
Yeah, with the distance thing, that's why it matters, if it's five homes on four-acre lots versus a one, you know?
Five homes on a half-acre lot.
Right.
Well, I think we gotta go back to look at this one and three-quarter acre thing on sub, on subject things.
Yes, I, I know right now, we've already surpassed that multiple times.
Yep.
All you gotta do is go to your GIS and start looking at these subdivisions on eight-hundred West, the west side, see what your total lot size is.
And they all have septic tanks?
Huh?
They all have septic tanks?
And well...
On a gravel.
Okay. Yes, yes.
Yeah.
This is one final thing. I have to leave for my wife's birthday, so this is a, you have a do or die situation. And to have, um, a few items to, that you can take home that, uh, related to the preliminary groundwater study. I don't have enough for everybody.
We'll, we'll make copies.
And I, I'll, I can email it as well. This is for a, a, a meeting that happened in, uh, in sort of a date, and I think it'll give you a kind of idea of what we're doing. And if you have other questions, please...
Could you email that to Angie?
Yes. Angie, I'll, let me go, let me get your number, your, uh, email address.
Anyone here remember the old, uh, back in, well, back in the early seventies, late sixties, they used to have the dye test?
Nope.
That they would actually put dyes in the waters and in the caves, up in the mountains.
They're still doing that. They're still doing that.
Yeah. It was fascinating how, it was up Smithville Cave, and they'd put dyes in, and then it would come up, and it'd come up in springs way down below.
Sometimes really fast.
Yes, yeah, really fast. So, it was amazing how that water moved and where it went. And if you read that text, I don't know, send it to something that's available.
Wouldn't be unbelievable if they tested for nitrogen and stuff, if somebody's home out in Nibley that's come into that, there's rivers under Nibley that's come off the Millville seppies and sitting out there.
See Millville flushes, Nibley drinks.
Yeah.
No, we test our water. We've got enough clay there to protect us that doesn't have chance of...
Oh, yeah. Okay, thank you, everybody, for being here. You guys, and especially our Planning and Zoning Commission, you guys really do pull an awful lot of weight for very little, and we appreciate you, everything you do.[1715.13]